Members of City Council, thank you for taking this Saturday out of your busy year to deliberate the creation of the 2018 budget. 2018 proposed budget is balanced for all funds with one caveat that we're going to discuss momentarily. The 2018 budget is basically continuation of the 2017 budget. This is welcome reprieve from the years of budget cutting that the city has endured recently. We were able to include a 1% pay increase as well as eliminate some furloughs that were part of previous budgets. On the other hand, there are no programmatic increases either. Now on to the caveat, there is $1 million in what the Budget Office considers one-time funds that can be used to fund items that council deems worthy. A list of possible items was created. This is the big list that you've got. This one here. List of items that was created based on previous or current need discussions. You're going to hear from a few concerned parties about why you should consider their specific item. The $1 million could be used to fund their items or yours if you wish. There are other ways to fund these requests. You could do some budget cuts. If you notice on page two of this, there are other options. There's some PC deferments, there's some raising of some taxes, there's eliminating some vacant positions, there's that sort of thing. As the budget officer, it's my duty to let you understand the ramification of what you're deciding here. This is your budget and you get to do with it what you wish. You have to create a, you have to balance the 2018 budget. But as for the future, you'll notice that there are surplus, there are shortfalls projected in five-year plan into the future and you can see the box right there. 2018 is balanced, that's the good news. Bad news is that we have a structural revenue issue where expenditures increase more than revenues in a typical year. Because of that, we're projecting budget shortfalls in 2019 through 2021. That $1 million could help us balance in 2019 as well. We will still be able to balance in 2020 or 2021 in any case. There's new rule that says that 19 and 20 through 21 needs to be balanced though. So you are not on the hook for balancing 2019 and 2021. All right? Now I'm going to step out of character just for a second here. I want you to understand that your personas, this is what your constituents want you to be. All right? Your constituents don't really care a whole lot about balancing 2019 or 2021. They want the pool open. They want the roads. They want the business incentives. All right? So I, I want you to be sure that you understand that. So here are your rules. You can choose up to three items on the list to fight for making a budget change. It takes a majority voting to make a change. You would need to try and build consensus. So what do we have? We have, do we have six here and three here? Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to take one of you and just turn you over into, into council two. So we'll have more of a five and four thing. And so what means your, what that means is that you're going to have to have a majority. If you have four people, two is good enough. Play your part. That's important. See what you, what you find important and run with it. If there's a mayor, you both have mayors, you'll facilitate the meeting. Just make sure that things go. You're going to have half an hour. You're going to find out that half an hour isn't very long because everybody likes to talk. All right? Concerned parties are going to float among the groups to get more information as needed. By the way, concerned parties, citizens, after there are their specific spots, you're going to get to go out and, and listen to what they're saying. These are public meetings. All right? So you're going to get to find out who agrees with you and who doesn't agree with you and see if you can, if you can do some work in a lobby. Yes?
So I don't, I think in a traditional meeting, there would be questions?
No, well, in a typical meeting, it's, it's pretty minimal. There might be some back and forth. This, this is not necessarily typical.
And could be questions today?
There might be. Absolutely. Absolutely possibly could be questions. And yes, if you have questions of, of those, of people, you feel free to ask. Yes?
Do we have a mock city clerk to keep us on time?
Yes, I am the mock clerk to keep you on time. And I have the clerk's favorite weapon. All right. Each, each council should choose one member at the end to talk about what changes you made and all you have to do is have a balanced budget in 2018. All right? You have the rules. All right? And then with that, I'm going to invite up to the stage citizen number one, who's a representative from the Kids in Dire Straits or Kids Foundation. Citizen number one.
Does the mayor have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. What does it mean in the, in the list of adjustments?
Pool are, and it's.
Oh, easy. I don't know.
So pool, so.
Oh, that means it's a thing, so what, so if you look on the second page, you'll, you'll notice that things cost money, right? So if you look at something that costs money, you're going to have to pay for it. But if you cut something, you actually get some money back and that's what that means. That's a budget cut. And that's the same thing if you look on the revenues. So that, that was a great question. All right? Hold on, let me get the timer ready to go. Is everybody ready to go?
Um, did you want somebody from my council to go over?
Yeah, you know what? We'll just do it at the end. We'll do it at the end. All right? Your time starts now.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of something that's dear and precious to all of us and it's our, our children. I want to speak to you about three topics that I think is, cuts to the core of why we are here tonight. And one is the opportunity to reinvest in opening the pools. I have my daughter here and she's struggling. She's struggling to jump rope because that's the only form of exercise that she has. I think it's a good opportunity for us to reopen the pools and I understand the investment. But one of the things I want you to realize is the cost that it would be if we don't probably be proactive in investing in the pools. And I'm talking about obesity rates. One of the drivers of healthcare costs today is obesity in the United States. It's estimated that it's going to cost 190 billion and 14 billion of that to children alone. So think about that as we're investing in, 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 in reinvesting the money. Secondly, is the public art. I know a lot of folks are concerned about the investment of public art, but think about our children having something to do, something to, to, to embrace and look at as they, they grow up. And we can use that money to reinvest in the infrastructure and to draw, you know, tax revenue streams in the community. And finally, daycare. How often have we ran into situations where our employers here have been non-productive because our parents had to stay home and take care of our children? So think about those things as you make your votes tonight and as you do your budget, you know, delineation. So thanks a lot for tonight.
Right? Do you have any questions of the citizens?
Yes.
Thank you again for your testimony, sir. What was the budget item you were speaking in favor of again?
Uh, three items. One's a pool. Second is investment in public art and third was daycare for our city employees.
And so just to let you know, the reopening of pools was number 11. The daycare is number eight and the public art is number six.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? All right? Thank you very much. Next up, we have citizen number two, which is a representative from the Aurora Businesses for Lots of Investment in Green Blacks or ABLEing. We'd like citizen number two. Please come up. Your two minutes start now.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Dominique Dubois and I am with Aurora Business for Lots of Investments Green Blacks called ABLEing. And I'm just here because we are fostering, our primary business proposition is basically fostering businesses in the community. And what I don't really understand is we have three different things that we're looking at. And I've lived in this city for 16 years and I've been a part of this organization for eight. And one of the things that we're trying to look at is business incentives. You know, we need more businesses in the city and it's only a $1.3 million impact. So why can't we offer those incentives for medium-sized businesses? Light rail, very important. Light rail. Do you guys all see light rail? What's going on with that? I mean, you know, we have a construction of $1 billion and we really need more light rail station, more light rail canopies to protect people when they're out. We also need to have more art. We also need to have more routes. I mean, why can't you guys just invest in that? If you want people to take the light rail, you got to invest more in the light rail. And then lastly, I'm for the tax rebates. You know, as a business owner and as part of this organization, you know, it's additional revenue that we collected in 2017. The cost is $1.1 million. So instead of investing in pay raises for employees, why don't you invest in the projects that I just mentioned? I mean, it has been 16 years I've lived here and I see as council, you guys spend money on other things. Why can't you spend it on the things that I've just asked about? Thank you. Is there any questions for me?
Uh, thank you for your testimony, Ms. Dominique. I do have, oh, we'll defer to council number two.
Yes, on the tax rebate, how would they, the public get that? Would it be on their income tax, the state tax? Or if it's on the state tax, what happens to the people that do not file taxes?
Well, that's a good question and, I mean, we would just collect it over 2017, but I mean, I don't see why we can't do it. Personally.
Yes?
Uh, no questions for me, sorry about that. Anybody from the council? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you for your time. I really hope you consider these projects.
Oh, we do have, oh, excuse me, Ms. Dominique, we do have one question from the representative in Ward A.
I have a real quick question for you in, in your tax rebate. So you want all the citizens to have a small tax rebate?
It's a 1.0 million one-time impact. I mean, the pro, pros of it could be it provides economic stimulus to Aurora. Don't you want that?
Of course we do. However, how do you want us to get that money?
Well.
From what funds shall we take that from?
Well, there's different ways that you can actually get the revenue.
Some of those funds that you want, should I take it from the library? Should I take it from the art district? How can I get that money to you?
Well, you know, personally, I think businesses are important, so I think council could find a way to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was really cool. Nice to go. Wow. I didn't even know what to say to those. That was tremendous.
Didn't get to boo you.
All right. Next up, we have citizen number three, a representative from the People for Officers Protecting Stuff or POPS for cops. Very much.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. I am here to represent the people for the cops. We have an opportunity now to present our budget item number seven, in which we can put cuffs on violators. In which means that we could basically help our police officers do the job that they need to do without them actually being there. As a possibility to raise over $1.7 million in revenue. That revenue can go to a lot of uses in the city. If you want to take a look at rev, the budget's number 17. Marijuana, how are you going to be able to positively generate, I'm sorry, did I hear some, positively generates revenues by sales of marijuana? It, it could be here today and gone tomorrow. Look at what the syntax has done for cigarette tobacco use. Is it on a decline? So how can you possibly expect revenues to come from marijuana usage when in fact you can actually bring up revenue from violators? Cuffs? One minute more? Okay, thank you. So now, let's help our police department.
Let's help our light rail.
Okay, so if we help the police officers, we currently have 600, approximately 700 police officers on, on duty. And you're expecting the city to grow to almost double within the next 10 years. Where are you going to be able to get that type of revenue without using technology as today's technology can be used? $1.7 million. We're not asking the public to pay the $1.7 million. We're asking the violators in the city to pay for it under fines. If you drive by any of the school districts and you understand that they are very, very hard up for, for revenue there because of the, the violators that are present, not only in around the school district, the parks, the low-speed avenues throughout the city, let the technology take care of the violators and generate funds for the city that could be used in other ways. Thank you.
Right? Well done, well done. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the council? We have one from the representative at Ward A.
Yes, I have a question. So I'm not quite clear what you're asking when you say let the violators pay. Are you talking about cameras that take pictures of people?
Yes, if you look at the budget item number seven, you'll see the photo speed vans will be deployed on residential streets with a posted speed limit of 35 miles or less. It's right there. Budget item number seven.
I see. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what you're asking. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Um, what were all the budget items that you were speaking of?
I had three items that I was, could have spoke on. One of them was the capital equipment as far as wildfire units and that is to generate $900,000, not to generate, but it would be a cost of $900,000 for outlying plains areas where it could possibly be wildfire in the future as far as growth in the city. And.
Actually, yours are. Then you've got 10, the APD CSI tech.
Yeah, and then I've got this one too, right?
Yeah, that's, that, we took that off, so.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Okay, so the other one too is the APD CSI unit. That is something else that could actually be paid through the revenue that is generated through speed vans.
And that is number 10.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Against marijuana.
And I am against the use of marijuana. It's a sin tax. A lot of the tax doesn't go to the schools anyway, so why, why even anticipate what the, what the sin tax is going to pay for the city? Sin tax.
Yes?
Regarding budget item number seven for the speed vans where you mentioned that you would like to see violators pay for their actions, basically, would that require, in your mind, would that require higher citations, more money that people will have to pay for their tickets?
I'm sorry, would it require what?
What she's asking is, in order to raise, to raise the money for number seven, which is the, which is the revenue speed vans, are you going to take that from violation dollars?
Yes.
Are people going to be paying for that?
Absolutely. It'll be paid, it will be paid through violation dollars.
So fines go up?
Well, fines will be generated that are not being generated now because the police officers that are on duty in traffic division cannot be everywhere at the same time.
Thank you.
Any else?
Thank you for your time.
Nice use of props. That wasn't, that wasn't a good presentation. All right. Next, we've got, next we have citizen number four, the representative from the Aurora Employees are Important Official Union or AEIOU, local 123. Could I have him, citizen number four, come up?
Thank you, mayor, council members, for your time tonight. I do represent AEIOU or Aurora Employees are Important Official Union. We have two main things that we'd like to discuss today. We'd like to tell you about the daycare for employees' children. That's a very important issue. When we think about employees, we think about productivity, we think about their families and we think about how to keep their children safe and, and have lower turnover in, in the positions that our city employs. We think about daycare for employees' children. It's, some people talk about this being a con that the employee benefit isn't typical to offer. That's what Aurora wants to offer. It's something that's not typical for a city. We want to not only retain, but we want to get the best employees for our city. So that's one of the things that we want, would like to advocate for tonight. The second thing we'd like to talk about is pay raises for employees. The current budget has a 1% pay increase. When we look at the past years where there has not been an increase, we are simply asking for an additional 1% to bring that to 1.2%. This keeps up with inflation, doesn't make up for years past, but we're willing to overlook that and, and that money is in the budget. When you have to consider tonight, voting for an IT system that's untested to track productivity on employees or to pay for a pay increase that's cheaper than that issue, we want you to vote for the pay raises for employees. The success of this city depends on your support for one, daycare for employees' children and two, the pay raises for, for employees, a simple 1% increase. Thank you for your time and I'm ready to take questions either now or later if you have any.
Do you have any questions?
We have a question from council number two.
What percentage of city employees are going to use the daycare?
Uh, we have a 70% rate of city employees that do have family members. This would be a very positive benefit with a very low cost of $450,000. That is one of the lowest-cost budget items that we're asking you to approve today.
And are employees that don't use it going to feel like they're being left out?
I, I think in the natural progression of employees thinking about staying with the city, having a daycare is one of those things that would be available to them when they do have families.
Thank you.
We have a question from our at-large representative.
As a parent, how, where are the funds coming from to ensure that the daycare providers are, are adequate and well-paid? As a citizen who pays over $250 a week for daycare, does that dip into Aurora City taxpayers' dollars and take away from those citizens in order to pay for employees' children?
So absolutely, the taxpayers would be funding this. It is an investment in our employees. It's the investment in the children and we, we think that this is what the city needs to, to keep our employees happy, to keep them productive and to keep this city great.
Okay.
All right, any more questions? Oh.
We have one more from our representative in Ward A.
Yes, I have a question. Are you a city employee or married to a city employee, child?
We're both city employees here tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank, I just want you to note that she cared so much about daycare for employees' children that she actually got pregnant for this. I know. All right.
Dedication to the cause.
Best prop ever.
All right. Next, we have citizen number five. This is a representative from the Citizens for Running Aurora Bureaucracy Better or Crab. Citizen number five.
Hello, esteemed members of council. I am very crabby today because you guys have spent way too much this year and in previous years, so we've really got to cut back the spending and I'm going to help you figure out how to do that. So number, the first and most important issue is the IT system of the productivity tracker, which is budget number five. And the reason we need that is because the city workers here, as I'm sure you know, are really lazy and we really need to track their productivity better. And it basically, it pays for itself, so we really can't afford to not do it over the next few years. It will really cause us a lot of savings. The next one is item number nine, the tax rebate. We really need to give back this money to the citizens because it's, it's their money in anyways and to keep it would basically be theft. And it also provides economic stimulus as well. But there are a lot of things that I'm against and the first one is budget item, budget item number six, the public art. We need to have businesses pay for that during the normal course of development and not have the city pay for that. Budget item number seven, the speed vans. It's way too Big Brother-ish and it creates a lot of animosity between the citizens and the city and I think that really will backfire on us. Number eight, the daycare, it's just way too expensive. It's, it's odd because like no other businesses really do that or cities really do that. So it's really asking for something quite unusual. And the pay raises, we really can't afford that either because we just really don't know what the future holds and probably won't be able to afford that. It will just lead to continuous deficits like endlessly into the future if we do that. So in, in ending, my, my helper here wrote me a poem that I'll, I'll, I'll recite to you. So, "I represent crab. Us crabby folks know that city government treats money like snow. We're shoveling it aside, it won't make us crabs decide to go away and let you waste our tax dollars while you all sit in your offices with your silly popped collars."
Silly popped collars?
Any questions?
All right, we've got a question.
So the million dollars, if we give a rebate equally to every citizen in the city, is less than $3 per person?
It's like, it's basically a Happy Meal, which will make people happy.
And, and so you really think that will benefit the city better than investing it in some of these other public works that we're talking about?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Question right here. We have a question from the council member at large.
Do you think those public works are important to the happiness, the welfare, the morale of the citizens of Aurora?
The artwork?
Artwork, libraries, pools, things like that?
Absolutely, but I'm just saying that it shouldn't come out of the city's budget and instead it should come out of the development budget of the area, the businesses and, and other local people there in that area that has artwork.
So those local people you're saying are should, are the ones that should be taxed?
Um, not taxed, but through local initiatives and stuff like that. Just, I don't think it should come out of the public budget just because that's like a general fund that should probably be used for other things.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else? All right, thank you very much. Okay, we had, while we were going here, we had one more person put in their name for a request to speak. I, I don't actually know the name, so, so when you come up, please state your name for the record and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Do not want to take much of your time tonight. My name is Ziggy Marley, reside in Ward Two. I am proposing an increase to marijuana taxes. I'm proposing re-increase retail by 5%, commercial by 5%. With that additional 10% in marijuana tax revenue, we will be able to provide the city with an additional $1 million for funding pertaining to pools, roads, homelessness projects, et cetera, et cetera. Besides the increase, I'm also proposing that we add retail marijuana stores. We only have 15. Denver has 250. What's up with that? Come on. In addition, we could also open up some more commercial grows. Think that'll bring some money to the city. And while we're doing all this, we don't want any raises for city employees. They are very content with their current wage. If they want a raise, they should get a promotion.
Got one minute.
That's all I have.
All right, do you have any questions of Ziggy Marley? Bob Marley, Ziggy Marley?
Ziggy.
Ziggy, Ziggy Marley.
We have a question from the representative in Ward A.
Yes, regarding the proposed tax increase on marijuana, I know 1% doesn't sound like very much, but how high is the tax rate right now on marijuana?
We have a city tax rate of 5%. 7.75%. Add it five, they'll put us at 12.5, 12.75. Sorry, my math's not too good.
Okay, thank you.
She'll lay off the weed.
Are there state taxes also on that though? There are state taxes and city taxes on the marijuana.
Oh yeah, those will still be included as well.
Yes.
So it's already pretty high.
Oh yeah, it can go higher. Sky's the limit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you know what the current tax rate is in Denver?
Good question.
It's comparable, it's comparable to where we are now.
Okay, so I just, if we open more retail and more commercial grows, but our taxes are 3% or 4% or 5% higher than Denver.
Correct.
Will that drive business out of Aurora to Denver?
Potentially, but we already don't have as many shops, so that's my argument.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Also, you said that you were hoping to raise it an extra 5%?
Also, uh, you said that you were hoping to raise it an extra five percent? And it says here that for every one percent increase in sales tax, the city will receive one million in new revenue? So you're asking if, or to raise it five percent, we'll get five million off of that?
Yes, sir.
You made one percent.
Yeah.
It would be worth one million.
Oh. My memory's not too good.
Lay off the drugs.
Had a little too many before I showed up. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Alright. Nicely done, Ziggy. Excellent. Okay, so what we've got now, you've heard from everybody and you know what you want, alright? So what we're gonna do is we're gonna break you into your, into your councils. What I want it to do is I want council, uh, one, or council A, to go over here, council two, or council B, to go over here, and you're gonna have about twenty-five minutes to work through this budget. And remember, you've got about a million dollars a one-time, you don't have to balance 2019, so if you wanna spend it on something ongoing, that's your prerogative. And, uh, go with it. Let, let us know if you have any questions. We're gonna be walking around making sure that you've got it all going on. Does everybody understand? Alright? And by the way...
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we motion to adjourn.
Let me, let me just tell you one thing, there are prizes, so, so you play your part, the person who plays the best part voted on by your group, uh, gets prizes. Alright? Same thing with the citizens. So, go at it.
Should I go on that side? Don't forget the cups.
Can I have one?